It's going smooth.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty smooth.
Pretty smooth.
Just keep showing up, you know, that's about half the battle, right?
Yeah. Step on.
Just, uh. I, uh. Judge Wayne Housen. I had a judicial.
And Harry.
Today, today.
Last night, he was talking about what it's like to be a judge. You just kind of come to work and if you cut the wood, it's fine. Exactly, well, you just show up and then. Just got, you just kind of cut the wood and they give it. You want to cut, all right, just show up, keep showing up and just cut the wood and go home. Cut the wood, go home. So, um. She's. So it's, uh, support services.
While you all are here, really quickly, we're gonna start trying to transition this, these boards over to more of an electronic basis. So I have provided you all with just copies of the agendas for today. And then I will pull the handouts that are usually with those up here on the screen for you all to look at. And then eventually we'll start trying to transition into the way that like the OCC runs with the iPads and the voting and trying to get everything on a consistent, every board kind of works the same way. So this is, this is the first baby step of trying to transition a little bit.
So you, you would have a, though I noticed that the email that you sent had the links to everything in it. I guess if you had your iPad, if I just click on that and you just sort of flip through whatever you got.
So we actually have a program on the iPads where it pulls up the, the program that has all of the agenda items, all of the attachments, all of the everything, and it allows you to vote so that I don't have to do it. This way it's done in our program where we do our minutes. So everything will just be digitized.
All right.
And I'll, once we break out the iPads and everything, I'll, I mean, you know how to use them. But all, there's, it's super simple.
I've never used them, right yet in that budget board.
That's all right, we'll get you there, Butch. Get you there, but it's kind of our.
We got your back.
Thank you, ladies. All right, I like that, I think that's a great idea. I guess do I have to supply my own, probably get my own iPad, I guess?
No, 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 we.
Might have some.
Yep. It'll be set up and ready for you all when you get in here.
That would be, it would be, the iPad's on the table.
Yep.
As part of the.
Yep.
That's cool. Uh, it's one thirty-two, uh, so, um, this is the Court Service Advisory Board, uh, meeting. Uh, so for Thursday, July fourteenth, I know notice was given. And right now of the, um, the chairman over there, I'm looking at, we have, um, Mr. Freeman's here, Mr. Hudson's here for Mr. Prater. That gives three, we need five, uh, people to have a quorum. And we'd have anybody present, uh, digitally that's, uh, anybody that's logged in? Okay. So at this time I'm finding, as chairman, I'm finding that we do not have a quorum to have a meeting. And so at this point we won't even have a, I guess if it's, if upon a finding of no quorum, is anything else we do? We just strike the meeting for now?
Yeah, it'll just be a no quorum. Um, we do still have to wait until thirty-five for the next meeting to begin.
That's fine. Um. I do have, um. Now this is, so they have a couple, uh, how, uh, the way it's looking here, this is, this is gonna be. So in this one, uh, mental health court, we have eight, because we have seven people, so we need.
Four.
Four. Um, that, that same on the other meetings here.
Yeah.
They'll need four. Okay. Now, I know Mr. Rabbits is on vacation, and so. Um. Have you had any RSVPs from any of our commissioners or other board members?
Um, I have not, but usually they do reach out to let me know that they're not going to make it, and I haven't heard from anyone.
Okay, all right. You guys wanna talk about the Thunder?
I like the new draft.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be pretty exciting, I think. Giddy kid and someone's guiding tour a little bit, really.
And our, our new big kid put on some weight. Oh, leave that guy, it's him.
Did he put on some weight?
No, he needs to put on some weight, oh, boy, is he.
Yeah.
But he handles himself pretty all gone well, at least he has in, uh. Wonder is it during bank, no, they started in banks, didn't they?
Did you say that kid, what's the kid, they were the, who, like, Pujo or some food, they call it, they got it and eat it. He's the one that's, the super skinny also, he kind of very.
Yeah.
He's a kind of interesting looking as well, he's so skinny.
Yeah.
Uh. While we're waiting here, but there's a. I don't know what's gonna happen, we, you know, we have, um, a consultant helping us give some guidance for drug court. Trying to help us figure out, and they have a couple reports from that. Also, we have some new, a new drug court bill that was passed, that's gonna really, uh, change some things too. And so, um, I have a copy of some of that stuff, but I don't have it on agenda item. And so I might, I might, what I might do is just, um, maybe before our next meeting, put it in the low, drop it off.
Okay.
At that time, and I'll probably ask if it's an item created for the next meeting. But we can get through that one, get to it. Uh, so it's one thirty-six, uh, right now, uh, and so this comes on for meeting for the Mental Health, uh, Board for the, the Thursday, July fourteenth meeting. Um, we have three of the board members that are present, uh, which is one board member short, uh, of the quorum. Uh, Ken Stoner as the vice chairman, I'm, I'm subbing in for Mr. Rabbits, the chairman is not here. Um, I'm also finding that at this time, we do not have a quorum to take to have a, the regular meeting for the Mental Health Court Board. Our next meeting is for the drug court, it will start in, uh, three minutes.
Do we need a motion to strike?
No, it's just.
Yeah. Do that ever happen?
We never called it to order, so.
Uh, but, uh, I think you and I talked a little bit about kind of the, the, the big picture plan, our consultant. Uh, kind of your summary says, you guys are. Amazing for, for what, for as large a program that you are and what you guys do for just the amount of resources they get at. Dramatically under-resourced. Uh, that's like, well, this is kind of what, yeah, that's just the way it works. Um, and so the, um, but they are kind of, uh, we have some strategies around expanding the program, but we're already too big to, to handle what we have, and so we're gonna look at recruiting another judge to take on the, um, that's a treatment court, spinning out our DUI out of our drug court. So we'll have just a drug court, a DUI court, maybe another judge to handle that, and we can work on expanding the drug court, but. Um, so, so there's gonna be a lot of stuff, I mean, with these, the changes coming to the DA's office, also the changes coming with this new legislation. It's gonna be a whole new, we gotta rethink all of it, you know, kind of rebuild, rebuild. But we're in a really good place, but we've got a lot to discuss. Anyway. How's your, can you, can you, can you talk about campaigning for the.
Sure.
Is that going okay?
Well, actually, the, uh, I didn't have a primary, and then there's my two Democratic opponents. And so that's, it's been settled now. And as far as how my campaign's going, not doing a whole lot on it right now. We'll start probably doing a little something, well, we'll start, what I'm doing actually is I've got some money raised and I'll continue to raise a little more money, uh, and, and decide what we're gonna do on the way with campaign.
Like, you've been around for a while, and there's your, how long you've been in office?
How you went in office after a special election in nineteen ninety-three.
Really?
Yeah.
You may want that.
So I have been there.
That one doesn't have all the.
That long. So I tell people I've been Johnny Prater's estate.
It's not far off. So, um. All right, so it's one forty, and, um, subbing in for our chairman, Mr. Bob Rabbits. Um, and I will call this meeting to order, I think, um, if you're here on behalf of Mr. Ma.
Michael Taylor.
Mr. Taylor.
Mitch Freeman.
Steve Austin.
Okay, so I do find that there, we do have a quorum, um, and so I will, there was a roll call, um, and, um. Right now, if we don't have anybody present, uh, virtually, we don't need to do the announcements about resetting, correct? So first item is approval of the minutes, this discussion, possible action, approve the minutes made in twelve. Uh, is there a motion that we approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion's been made second, motion debated second, we approve the minutes of May twelve. Roll with favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, most of the minutes are approved for May twelve. Uh, departmental items, number two, discussion of possible action regarding the drug court statistical report. And I think that is going to be presented by Mr. David Gilbert. Did you get Mr. Gilbert's here? And do you have a, do you, do you have, you have a copy of that that you put up there, or is that something that we, we passed out?
I assessed it. Um, no, I've got some copies here that.
Did I receive it?
Is that something that, um, we do have the one for the Mental Health Court, I have the one for the, uh.
Amazing.
Good question. Did you see it?
I see it.
Did you go to the deal?
I did.
How was it?
I was just not good here. Any other questions? Starting eleven.
Yeah, I know. So, uh, this, this is, thank you, uh, Mr. Gilbert, for your report here. So active in the program, and active means are actually not, um, active means are actually come to court, they're not at a treatment facility, they're not in the DFC.
Yes, sir. No, they, they can be at residential facilities since they're state funded, uh, but they cannot be, uh, DFC sanctioned or at first, uh, because first that's not state funded.
So if you, from my view, if you count everybody we got in the program, we're probably close to. Four fifteen, four twenty, but if we count active as what, or, because they're just engaged, okay? You wanna walk us through the report?
Um, yeah, uh, some of the most important stats on here, you guys can obviously see them, but graduation rate is very fluid. It goes anywhere from around eighty-two percent up to like eighty-three point five, uh, we're very proud of that. Uh, that's sixty-two graduates already in two thousand twenty-two. Um, percent employed, they come in at about thirty-eight point four percent, um, when they graduate, uh, sorry, unemployed at two point two percent. Um, income from employment, uh, we've got sixty-five percent change. Uh, we also have a seventy-eight percent change when it comes to education, when we're getting the high school diploma. Another note on that, um, the Department of Mental Health has also allowed us to not only, um, make them get their GED to graduate, uh, if they're not capable cognitively, uh, they can have an alternative route and do like a trade school, like a fourth of the Pisces or something like that. Um, and children living with participants, percent change, nine hundred and forty-nine percent. And if you guys have any questions, um, on the BGA grant, I did think we did talk about it in the last meeting. Um, Madison, uh, Malone's been working on that diligently, and we're very hopeful that that comes through. It's gonna be a huge, uh, asset to our program.
So, no, we, we've asked for about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, that'd be over four years. We'll probably find out, uh, we anticipate probably by maybe September, if we're gonna be awarded that or not. If that comes in, we'll have a, a pretty, there's a pretty competitive process to get those, but we gotta fingers crossed.
And then one thing we definitely wanted to bring up today was the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, the administration for community living is distributing these funds, and what we're asking for, if we can get this grant, is to hire a case manager from the diversion hub. Um, this would really help our program out, and what case management is a huge need, especially early on in the program, to meet a lot of their survival needs. Um, so we're requesting that this issue be put on the agenda for the next advisory meeting, please.
It'd be something if, if we, um, get that, this board would vote to use some of those resources to fill that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't think we would use the ARCA, the ARCA money would go to, for different case managers with OCC HD. I think we're al- also asking to use our already, the money we already have in our budget to get a diversion hub case manager like the Mental Health Court has.
That'd be, um, I know you had a conscious, Mr. Rabbits, about that. Do you think, is that something you think this, this board would need to vote on?
Or Mr. Rabbits, it is.
So we probably need to put that on the agenda then, so we gotta have a vote on, but, you know, the agenda item would be, um, a use, approval for use of funds from the drug court budget for. Case manager assigned to diversion hub. It'd be a diversion hub, we basically, the idea would be, we voting on giving money to diversion hub. They would do the hiring, and then they would assign that person back to the treatment courts. But this board needs to prove it, um, so we put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Whose ARCA, ARCA money is this, where, where is this coming from?
DHS.
DHS?
Yes.
Okay, so it's coming, it's state, ARCA, state ARCA funds, okay.
And they would partner with Oklahoma City County Health Department to give us community health workers, which we already have, but we would get two more.
Okay. Can be funded out of ARCA?
Yes.
Okay, through the city?
Yes.
Okay.
This, this would be the one that would be kind of more, more focused towards pandemic relief issues?
Correct.
And the BGA technology grant, uh, that's through the Department of Mental Health, substance abuse. Uh, potentially, again, fingered cross, we're looking for thirty thousand dollars, uh, to assist us with SCRAM bracelets. What the SCRAM bracelet is basically, um, a dermal sensitive device that detects any type of alcohol, sweat, and the skin. Um, the, the science behind this is, it's extraordinary, because when somebody has this on, he just can't drink. You can't get away with it, you can't cheat the test, so it really helps with accountability, and really we think lower recidivism rate if we can get this. Uh, same thing with mobile breath devices, goes in that same category. And then also just some cell phones for our independent new police. I mean, a lot of them come right out, they have nothing at all, um, right out of incarceration, and a cellphone is a must. They've gotta be able to communicate with the program, and some of their classes are over Zoom as well, so they need a smart phone.
We know a couple of people that can use that. We know a couple of people who can use that.
Yeah.
If there's no way to cheat the system.
Right.
Because we get told all the time about dilutes.
Yeah. The SCRAM bracelets would be, uh, remarkable, they're, they're expensive, uh, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars a month per person. Want to rent them, yeah. But, um, they, right now, people spend a hundred, a hundred dollars a month on their UAs, and this would be, um, you know, much more effective than the UA in terms of detecting alcohol use.
Okay, so, who, do they, do these, do the clients have to show up periodically? In other words, all right, so I've got the bracelet on and I'm drinking, so the bracelet's going to sense that, right? But who's gonna see it, who's gonna read it?
Yeah, so that sends data, uh.
Oh, okay.
It, it, it has like a, uh, you know, connectivity, like self, self connectivity, so it sends all the data on that. And they would still have to have some, um, drug test to make sure they're not, because this is why they detect alcohol. So they would hit, so, but usually if someone's coming in, their drug, their DUI court, drug of choice is alcohol. SCRAM de- device is the, is the, is the ideal technology to use to detect that. Because the UAs are actually, it is easier to manipulate the UA, like, try and dilute your test, or you can play games, you can time some of your drinking sometime, uh, it's not nearly as reliable as a SCRAM bracelet.
Okay. And again, the SCRAM bracelet notifies whoever.
Probation officer. What are we gonna know about the bracelet?
Um, I've, I've been pleasantly persistent with the Department of Mental Health, and they, and we'll let you know, just be patient.
All right, so I hadn't given us a date?
No, they're not giving us a date, they said it takes a while when it goes through BGA, so just be patient.
I think it was, uh, the, so I think, see, they were talking about it being used for technology, and they were thinking about technology in terms of cell phones and tablets, and we're thinking of technology in terms of mobile monitoring. And so they were, we were kind of asking for adjustment or with this qualifier to the technology, so. Yeah, you go ahead, Mr. Gilbert.
Um, we also had a wonderful training on Narcan, I know probably everybody in this room is familiar with fentanyl these days. Um, we have had a lot of loss, I wouldn't say, sorry, it's not a lot of loss, but we've had loss in our program over the last year. And we've had overdose, and most of it is fentanyl. Um, it's definitely a huge epidemic, um, so we've been awarded with the four hundred free Narcan kits, a lot of fentanyl test strips as well. Um, the Narcan kits basically have two, uh, Narcan medication in them. Um, very, very easy to use, um, and we're just trying to distribute that to every single participant, so their family members can have it. Um, and just really increase the awareness on, on how fentanyl is really, really been a huge danger to our community. Uh, the fentanyl test strips, um, is a harm reduction device, um, this is, um, some of our providers aren't really on board with this much, I am a hundred percent when it comes to harm reductions, I'd rather save a life than say, hey, uh, you can't use this drug. Um, so the fentanyl test strips, basically, we give it into the participants, and they can test, uh, their methamphetamine, or they can test their opiates to see that it has fentanyl in it before they use. So there is some controversy with that, um, yeah, I know a lot, uh, but it is a lot of new science behind that, and it's kind of a new. Uh, addiction, there's a lot, it progresses through the years, and this is where we're at right now.
Yeah, and just on that, no, we don't allow people to use fentanyl in the program or heroin, but the reality is, people come in and act of addiction, and so whenever David uses word, we, it's not really we as in the drug court, but the treatment providers that we contract with, they'll have test strips, so if somebody is in active addiction, they can have access if they want, they can test their heroin, and that's really something that our providers do. Uh, it is har- it's, it is harm reduction, but we, you know, we don't allow them to use heroin. Truth is, they do, when they come in, that's just what they're doing, until they can get stable and sober, and at least it keeps them from overdosing.
Um, and then just, uh, continued effort, we're really trying to partner with our tribal nations. Um, went out to Concho a couple of months ago and had a wonderful meeting with the Cheyenne and Apo tribes. And, uh, just received a huge need, uh, for that population, uh, especially when it comes to addiction, uh, in general. Uh, and then lastly, the NIDCP conference is July twenty-fifth to twenty-eighth. Uh, again, addiction is extremely complex and dynamic, um, and just kind of the analogy I wanted to use is, um, we need to constantly educate ourselves, we wouldn't want our physicians in our country just to graduate med school and become complacent.
We do have, um, how many people from our, uh, program is going to the court conference?
Um, from our program, providers included?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I mean, I just talked to Hope, and they're bringing in about five people, so I really couldn't tell you, because he's in, he's in this place.
We're just ready to get everybody in the program, to go, it's an incredible training program, and so a lot of our core team is going to the conference, and a lot of our providers are going as well.
Now, you've attended that how many years now?
I've gone every year, but, yeah, I don't miss it.
Where is this?
This is, this was in Nashville, uh, the year before it was in Washington DC. Um, you know, it is, uh, it's, I, I, it is, I, I learned so much every year, so still mind-boggling how much I even been around for a long, and still don't know, you know?
Yeah.
All right, David, questions, uh, for Mr. Gilbert? Hi, David.
Thank you for your report.
So I guess can we, um, accept the report? We devote.
Yeah.
I'm gonna accept the report as presented. Question, late in second, if we'd be all in favor, all in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, they approve. Uh, item number three is discussion of possible action regarding the use of necessary office space for a drug court in the Hall of Court. We should pause that till, uh, continue that till the next meeting, if Mr. Rabbits is here to give us an update on that. Number four, discussion of possible action regarding future disposition of closed drug court files. Uh, Mr. Rabbits requested that too, I don't, I don't have any update on that, does Zbels having an update on that?
What?
Uh, the, the disposition of closed drug court files, so we're hanging out with the doctor.
We just have to find a time to go to the warehouse to figure out which ones we need shredded. And, you know, we have, Mr. Rabbits always jokes about, we're gonna do it when you're on vacation, and we don't have court, but we don't ever have a week where we're not in court, so.
All right, so we'll table that, uh, for, uh, the next meeting. Um, number five is discussion of possible action regarding report on the current AWOL participants. I think that is actually embedded into the statistical report on like the fourth item here. Uh, so we have still a hundred and twenty-six, uh, which actually that's changed, so we just picked up about five or six yesterday, uh, just to random, uh, but I don't have anything further on, if Zbels have anything on AWOL they wanna discuss. If not, let's just, uh, pass, uh, this table of that. Any possible, there's a, any possible action, we'll table that for the next meeting. Uh, discussion of possible action regarding drug court budget report. Uh, Mr. Rabbits, uh, would be presenting that, but he did give us a copy here. I guess everybody has a copy of it, uh, but since Mr. Rabbits is not here to present, he is the one that probably has the, we'll say the, uh, expertise related to, uh, the, um. I, I, I know just generally that we, we have enough money to keep going for now. So, um, I, I know that that's, that's where we're at.
Is this reflecting the twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
Uh, I don't think so. Uh, well, at least I think that the, uh, my understanding is that contract, uh, comes to us right now, we're in the process of signing that contract for, for the twenty-two, twenty-three. And then once we sign that, we'll start getting funding for that, I think it's quarterly payments. Is that correct, you know?
Yes.
Quarterly payments, um.
The region, the reason I'm asking is, the revised budget is the same as the available budget and reflecting no expenses, no expenditures at all.
Well, we probably ought to have Mr. Rabbits here to explain that, because I, I.
I wanna guess this is, since we're now in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, I wanna guess that that's what this is.
Okay. I see what you're saying. Uh, it relates to budget, uh, we do have a lot of, uh, you know, let's say, issues, but, um, we just, we, uh, I made an executive decision to, um, approve of, that we, 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 we learned several months ago that our drug court lab, uh, was not, we, we were thinking that fentanyl was, could kind of show up on our general opiate screen, and it turned out it was not. And so we had to make an emergency decision, uh, to spend two thousand dollars a month, uh, to buy a certain number of tests. And so, um, it, and it has, um, I, I told the compliance resource group, we have to have a fentanyl test, it is a very common drug in our community now, um, and so we began testing for fentanyl. Uh, and that is, um, something we've had to do, just that we could, uh. So if we're spending an extra two thousand dollars a month, then, uh, I think we've made Mr. Rabbits aware of it, but we don't really know exactly where the money's coming from, so, um, but we'll probably save further discussion of that until we have, uh, more of our members here that have more of a knowledge about the budget and how those funds are being allocated.
Is it safe to assume then that the fentanyl test strips that you, that we talked about previously, are the test strips you're talking about?
There's a difference, so the fentanyl test strips are. There's a difference. So the fentanyl test strips are, would be somebody who is a, um, uh, somebody who's in active addiction that has a substance use disorder. They're buying their drugs off the street, they wanna know if the drugs that they bought have fentanyl in them. A lot of drugs that are sold, they're, 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 way they buy them, uh, their fentanyl is in there, they don't know that it's in there, that's how you get your overdoses. And so it allows someone who's using drugs to test the drugs before they take them if there's fentanyl in it. What I'm talking about is our drug court lab, whenever you pee in a cup, we wanna be able to test your urine for fentanyl. And they have to buy an assay that goes in the machine that compares the urine to a fentanyl assay to see if it's in there. And we had to commit to a certain number of tests per month for them to invest in paying for that assay to put it in the machine that we test them for. So we can, and, uh, it, it's, it's been quite an eye-opener whenever you realize how many people you have in the program that have been using fentanyl that you didn't know. Um, and, um, it's, it's helped us stabilize a lot of people that had a hard time, couldn't ever quite figure out why they were not doing well in the program. Well, it turns out they use a fentanyl, we just weren't able to detect it till, uh, a few months ago. So, yeah. So, uh, so any other discussion on budget, let's say for next month. Uh, number seven is discussion of possible action regarding implementation of cloud-based software. That's the, uh, Canexus. Um, I don't have any updates on that, so I'd ask if that'd be, um, table till next month.
Um, since Mr. Rabbits did go ahead and provide you all a copy of the budget, are you okay with making a motion to receive the document that was provided?
We can receive the document, um, uh, but it's hard to proving it.
Right, right, just to receive.
So is there a motion to receive the document?
Second.
Motion to make in second, that we received the, uh, drug court budget report, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm gonna carry, so the drug court, like, receive. Thank you. Uh, next is citizen participation, is there any citizen participation, uh, from the, uh, on our treatment court? Uh, board comments, uh, I have just briefly, um, I'm gonna give everybody a copy of this for now. Uh, just, our, I mentioned in the past, we have received, um, a small amount of, uh, significantly amount of money to hire a consultant who's a drug court expert. They're on the national faculty for the National Drug Court Institute to help advise our program to set forth a strategic plan. Uh, you know, how do we, how do we grow, but grow in a way that's, uh, we can still manage the growth? So I do have some reports here that I'm just gonna make available to the members, but then, um, I don't really have much of a discussion on them, 'cause I just wanna make sure you have the information. And the other piece of information, I'm just passing out to the board members, is, uh, there's a new drug court, uh, legislation that was just passed. Uh, it goes into effect November first and, um, it's gonna, it's gonna affect our program pretty significantly. Uh, so I just wonder if you have a copy of that. I can pick together some summaries between now and then, at least on what you have available for report. Thank you. The short version is, at least on the act, they're gonna, it does allow a broader range of people to be accepted into treatment court. So previously there were certain offenses that you were automatically disqualified from and that will no longer be there. Um, so it makes treatment court available to a larger population. Um, also, there are some changes around exactly who approves it, how they get approved for the program, how fast they get approved for the program, uh, that we're gonna need to kind of retool. On, uh, just a brief summary on what our expert is, they, they, she actually came in, she spent a week with us observing all of our, uh, processes and interviewing all of our, uh, interviewing participants and treatment providers and staff and team members. Um, the summary is that we are, uh, do an incredible job for being profoundly under-resourced is what her comment. Um, but we also, if there's, in order to grow, we're gonna have to recruit, um, additional judges to, um, help participate with the program, where the ideas, the idea of the proposal really is to take drug and DUI court. They should not be together, you should have drug court and you should have a DUI court, a different population. We should spin off DUI court, probably a different judge, but now DUI court. Spin off where, right now our better treatment court, we go to a different judge as well. And then that way the growth that we're gonna have from the new, from the new act here and also the growth that we're gonna come from the Department of Corrections. You think, so the people over on probation violations or pro-revocations will cause the drug court to grow. And then that's where, uh, the drug court can focus their time on that population. So, um, anyway, that's the short summary of, um, some of the recommendations. Let's say we're following best practices in a lot of areas, we set up, uh, a number of areas to improve on, mainly. Our, our largest deficiency is that we are way out of compliance on our supervision. We're supposed to have, um, probation of, we're supposed to have about one probation officer for fifty participants. I mean, if we need eight probation officers, maybe we have two. And so we're way out of compliance on that, or we, we are working on a strategy to, to, um, hopefully some of our, our BGA grant that comes through, that can help, help us, uh, let somebody can go to supervision and then also we're trying to pitch an idea to the Department of Corrections to create a pilot program a year, uh, to really follow the, the treatment court best practice and have and allocate more resources to the program. And so hopefully we have that meeting, I'll have more updates, but, um, I, I hope if I can, I'll be in touch with you, we probably do wanna have an agenda item, but, um, I'm not sure if that's gonna phrase it to the point on what the, uh, uh, how we're basically following through on the proposals on the strategic plan and how we're gonna handle that. Uh, that's all this board member has to say. Uh, so any other board members have any other comments? Uh, is there any new business? Seeing no new business, uh, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to make in second, adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn. Uh, veterans treatment court, uh, call that off, the meeting now, uh, Mr. Rabbits is not present as the vice chairman. Uh, I'll assume the responsibility for that, uh, to have, um, roll call, Mr. Hellston?
Steve Hellston.
Mitch Freeman?
Ryan Munn.
There's Stoner, I find that we have a quorum. First item of business for our veterans treatment court, um, is, uh, discussion of possible action regarding amendments made twelve. Accept a motion to approve the minutes. Motion's to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, give me the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's pretty, uh, status report from coordinator.
Yeah, can you hear me? Let's see, uh, since our last report, we have graduated, uh, five veterans from our program. Uh, I'm sorry, we've added five veterans and graduated additional four. Uh, we've cut down our AWOL by one. And we've also, uh, started asking the VA to start tracking exactly what their, uh, what kind of help we've been getting these veterans as soon as we get them over there. So, uh, since they've been, uh, put into BTC, we've had eight of our veterans that have actually gotten enrolled for services at the VA, which is pretty much a life-changing, uh, experience for them because it just opens up so many doors for resources for them in the future. Uh, we've got three military discharged SAS upgrades for them since they've been here. And, uh, we've also got them some upgrades as far as their, uh, disability. Uh, we've had, we've been able to help out ten veterans with that.
Tell me a little more about the, uh, the discharge upgrades.
So, uh, you can get in this program with any kind of discharge except for a dishonorable. So we have some veterans that come in with an OTH and other than honorable discharge and most of the time, uh, you can go ahead and fight that on the backside. If you can get a good, uh, veteran benefit officer, they can go ahead, peel through your service record, see if there was something that was service-related that, for instance, if I ended up fighting my supervisor or something, but I just come back from a deployment where I had sustained some kind of PTSD. They could go ahead and link, okay, this was service, uh, service-related and that's why he acted out. And in an instance like that, you can get your discharged SAS upgrade, which would then allow you to receive VA benefits.
So who makes, who decided you have to go to for final decision?
Uh, it, it goes through the VA.
Okay.
Yeah, the Veterans Administration.
Okay. Good.
Any questions?
I can receive these report.
Motion's been made, you receive the report.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion accepted, thank you. Um, number, uh, three, discussion of possible action regarding creating accounts, sub-accounts of the county to hold funds designated for the program. I think we end up doing that for our, um, UA reimbursement, is that correct? Uh, who we got the, the sub-account now? Or, uh, we, we have a way to, um, your office is accepting payment for, people paying back UA.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, you, you talked with Presti on that, didn't you?
Yes, it's going very smoothly, actually.
Is it going good?
It is. Wait, how do you think that's so far?
But again, it's, I mean, there's just not a, there's not a lot of transactions, right? I mean, there's like five a month or so.
No, there, there really are, and it, it's totally dependent upon the veteran's ability to pay at any given time, so it'll flush away as, as we go along.
What do we finally decide to do? Are they bringing the money to us to keep treasure? That's what I thought.
Uh, for most of our veterans, I'm just walking them down, making sure that everything goes smoothly.
Okay, I, okay, there you go, that's the best of all approaches.
Well, so, uh, I, my question is, we have, we have the word accounts as plural, and so our idea at one point was have a, a sub-account for the create, for the accepting of IOUs. So we, sometimes we loan veterans money to pay for their urine test and they pay that back. Uh, the other issue was where can veterans pay their user fees? Because we also had user fees that were stipulated to whenever we created the program, that's the, the user fees. Um, this, uh, our clerk, uh, did not wanna do them because that, that created an entry on OSCEN. That's, that's the software he uses to run his program and there wasn't a statute that said the state can collect that money. So that's why, that, that's why your office started collecting money for the IOUs. And I was wondering, is it a solution then also to create a sub-account for the, can the county, can the county collect the user fees?
I have no idea.
Yeah, that, that, my understanding of the whole of it was, was that the state?
I know what one attorney's opinion would be.
Uh-huh. Well, we can, we can collect money here focused, using state, county resources to, um,
Get into that county state.
But, but, we've already, we've already done one.
Did you ask before you did that one?
Well, I think that, I think that, uh, part of the, part of the things on user fees is the, the fact of whether or not, and I know this is Mr. Rabbits' point, that the statute doesn't call for it. I know if he was here, that's what he would say. So that was never discussed on the user fees on this particular account.
Part of it, there, there is no statute, that's the part of it, that, that's the big problem, is no statute that says this is how veterans courts are supposed to work and that if you have a veterans court, you ought, the state's authorized to collect a user fee on it, right? But it's not, to me, that's the way that there's this giant statutory vacuum around what would be, what would permit the state to do. But I guess you'd even argue, you have.
Well, how do we do it in the drug court?
There's a statute that says that, you know, counties are authorized to create a drug court and they're, they're authorized to collect a user fee. That's in the drug court statute, and so, um, there, we, we're creating this veterans treatment court, which is really a drug court for veterans primarily now. Um, and, but since the, so what happened over, uh, Jerry Askins, uh, whenever, you know, you know, the administrative office of the courts, whenever we were trying to create this sub-account, OSCEN, they go look for statutory authorization to create that. And since there's nothing that says a veterans court could be, um, and my argument was, well, it's kind of, kind of like a drug court for veterans, so can we, can we call it that? And they said, well, no, we would really, you know, for us to collect money, we'd really like to see a statute that says we're allowed to collect that. And that, and there's not a statute that says that, there's not any statutes that can remember that we can create a veterans court. If I'm not mistaken, I'm not even sure if the statute says we're allowed to create a veterans court, yet we did. Uh, so, uh, to me, I don't, I don't really fully, it, it, to me, this was all centered around whether the state could do that. Um, you know, our county has a program, I mean, does the state, does the state authorize, uh, what happens in our veterans diversion program? Do they have user fees for that? Is there user fees for the diversion program?
We do not.
We do not.
We do not have a user fee for a diversion. Any statutory authorization to create a diversion program? I'm kinda playing devil's advocate here today, so, but I, I get it, maybe we should table that for now. Or maybe we should try to get approval, Mr. Rabbits is not here. We have, we have a quorum. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, the, the, the issue is that we did create this, it is recommended by the, the Justice for Vets. We follow their model, uh, it's customary in a treatment court program to collect a user fee. It goes to fund the program. We're gonna have a problem, once our grant runs out, we do not have enough resources to fund the program. So we have to start figuring out where that money's gonna come from, and so we may be coming to the county at some point or somebody's saying, hey, we need extra money to run this program. I don't know what the answer will be, but either the program.
We did.
Well, so, I mean, say, but, but we, part of the problem we solved, we could start collecting user fees, part of the problem. I mean, it's not, it, we, it wouldn't be enough, but it would be, it would be, it's, it's not an insignificant amount of my issue. And so, um, having a way to collect that, uh, if there's a prohibition from the state, well, not really prohibition, but the state wants to see statutory authority. The county, uh, I was quite worried, but we created a veterans court.
Are we, does Tulsa County have one?
Yes.
Okay. Have they, is theirs older than ours?
It has, yeah. They, they created theirs, probably about twenty years ago.
Oh, really? The veterans court?
Their veterans treatment court, yeah, they were the first ones. And then, uh, I know Canadian County has one, I think Rogers County has one as well. So, um, I'd be happy to find out what.
If I may, I think, uh, the way Tulsa gets around it from my conversations with their coordinator is they have a nonprofit, uh, community service council and that's how they end up collecting their fees, just through that nonprofit. So, I, I don't know if, how that would relate to us or how we could try to gain that out in the future, to apply that to us, but that's how they're getting it.
So they're, they're collecting user fees, it's just a matter of who collects them, I suppose.
Two things that bother me about this, first one is it bothers me that there's nothing in the statutes that provides for this, especially if it's been in existence that long in Tulsa County. And as, I've always been taught and everyone here already knows, as a subset of state government, we can only do those things that we are specifically authorized to do by state statutes. So if it doesn't authorize us to do this, I'm not quite sure how we're doing it. And I for sure wouldn't know how Tulsa County's doing it. So that's bothersome, but it seems to me that that's easily corrected. I, I mean, it, it, nothing else, add a line for, uh, the drug court, and I don't wanna mess up drug court, the drug court and Veterans Treatment Court Judiciary Board. In other words, make, make both of them that way authorized by the state of Oklahoma. And then whatever's authorized in, in the statutes that pertain to our drug court, at least be able to use those for our veterans court. And the second thing that does bother me on this, uh, you've got, what'd you say, five? Five's all the member, I mean, is all the?
Those are graduates.
Like, how many do you have in the program right now?
Uh, fifty-two.
Okay, fifty-two, okay, okay.
We've added five.
I see what you're saying. You added five and graduated four, I'm with you, but fifty-two is your starting number, okay. So I was wondering how the world.
It'd probably be wise, I guess, that, you know, if you've seen the mental health court statute, it says, counties are authorized to create their own mental health court.
Yeah.
And it's just.
That's perfect.
Yeah, and, um, you know, yeah, I, I guess there's an argument around, well, any kind of doctor that you wanna have, uh, is authorized to create their own. You know, we, we have domestic violence doc or whatever doc that they wanna have, and so I guess it'd be nice to have. Uh, maybe that's what we try to get in some kind of omnibus bill or something for the.
Yeah, and just, you know, and then give us, to give the county then that, that deems to create one under that statute, the right to decide the administrative rule. the right to decide the administrative rules or the administrating, the administration of it. And, I mean, we don't want too much help.
Well, that's the issue, you gotta be careful, you ask for a nothing, so you gotta get a structure that. So, okay, so let's go ahead and table that for now. Item number four, this is about the website and tracking system, that is tabled also, that's not a, something that we are prepared to discuss today. Citizen participation for Veterans Treatment Court. Board comments for Veterans Treatment Court. New business for Veterans Treatment Court. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned, thank you.
Well, not bad for two that didn't meet.